We call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Lefever.
Here. Would everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first I'd like to welcome Dr. Small, our superintendent-elect, as she takes over at the helm tonight as the superintendent for this meeting. So, welcome, Dr. Small. We have a suggested-
If I can introduce Joshua Schicker, who is joining us also tonight as Assistant Superintendent-elect and is replacing me at the board table where I used to sit.
Thank you. Welcome, Josh.
Thank you.
All right, we have a suggested motion that the Board of Education will enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, and deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski. I'd say, Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
I will open up our closed session room to make that available for the board.
Mark, you are in.
I think I'm just waiting for Dr. Small to return here.
Mark, if you could please close that session to make sure we get everybody back.
Dr. Small, when you think we're good to go, give me the word and I'll tee up the next motion.
Okay, can I, can I check and make sure Sally Sameruski is available in here and can hear us? Sally?
Yes, I'm here and I can hear you.
Okay, you can remain unmuted, please, Sally.
I think I'm in.
Okay, Ed, yes?
Okay.
Um, I don't see Kim. There's Kim on my screen.
Yeah, I see Kim.
Yeah, I think we are all here. Board members?
All right.
And I can hear you and all board members. So Bob, please proceed.
All right, we have a suggested motion that the Board return to open session. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Move. Second.
A roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye. All right, our next section of business will be public comments and hearings. For the public comments, I will read off any of the comments that were submitted. Public comments from citizens were accepted prior to the meeting via submission of an email address that was given. The submissions were due by 7:00 PM this evening. And so, I have three emails, all from the same person, addressed to District 211 Board of Education. So I'm just going to go through all three of them. District 211 Board of Education, during the last election, school board policies were violated by sitting board members, Robert Lefever and Anna Klimkowitz. What actions have been taken to ensure this won't happen again in the upcoming school board election? The second one, people are losing jobs and District 211 is giving non-union employees a pay increase. Please put this on your agenda for discussion at the next board meeting. There are several things this district can do to ease the extreme financial pain our community is going through. The pandemic demands we all come together to help each other. And finally, the third one, bus drivers haven't worked for half a year and they're getting a salary bump. The D-211 school board needs to defend this action to those in our community that have lost their jobs and businesses due to this pandemic. Please put this on your agenda for public discussion. We need to know what our elected officials are doing to defend taxpayers that pay for these schools. Thank you, John. All right, that concludes the public comments. That will bring us to our consent agenda. We have a suggested motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye. All right, that will bring us to special reports and communications. First, we have the remote learning update. Dr. Small, did you want to make any comments?
I do, thank you. So I wanted to, in the write-up, it certainly gives you some more details, but I wanted to focus on three areas of this, in terms of us closing out the school year, what we're doing this summer, and then what we're looking towards into our August for our 2021 school year. Obviously, our educators were thrust in a situation, our employees were thrust in a situation that none of us could have imagined. We should be very proud, and I am too, of what our employees have done to really change their mindset into how they approached education, to explore different aspects of it, and really make the best that we could out of a situation that we had very little control over. We had our students and our teachers work diligently to take AP tests online, which is something they've never done before. We had teachers reaching out in many different ways to ensure that our students stayed connected with us, even though we physically could not reach out to them. Our food service is estimated to provide 575,000 meals from when we started in March until we end this week for the school year. We will continue those meals throughout our summer school program this summer. And then finally, our teachers, our administrators, our kids did some very creative and fun graduation parades so that our students had a chance to come back, see some of their teachers that as seniors they might not have the opportunity to do again. I know they were very emotional. I know they were still very fun in the celebratory piece. We still do have a June and July date on the books to potentially do something else for our graduates. We certainly can't define that specifically right now until more information comes through, but we wanted to make sure that we did something immediately as their school year ends and every senior celebrates, and then continue to potentially do something else as we get into the summer, and maybe some different restrictions are lifted from us in our ability to do some things with our seniors. In terms of the summer 2020, we are still running summer school with many of our courses as we have done in the past. We have been designated by the ISBE to run our summer school remote. So we will do that with our summer school running from 8:00 to 11:30. It is a different type of remote learning than what our students did during second semester. This remote learning will be active engagement from the student from 8:00 to 11:30. It sounds like a very long period of time. It is, but remember, in summer school, they take one class only. So it is similar to the expectations that we would have if we were face-to-face. If we were face-to-face, they would be in school for five hours with one class, and we are looking at a three-hour engagement between the teacher and the student throughout the summer, staying with our traditional summer school schedule. And then finally, another big question that's on the table that everyone continually asks me is, what are we doing in August? I will tell you this, we are currently working to develop our plans for August. Mr. Schumacher, Mr. Hummel, Mr. Kovak, Mr. Peterson, those are the four leads of the four committees that we have running. Mr. Kovak is running the committee that will start to look at what health and safety applications we can put into our school. Mrs. Hummel certainly is on the financial end in terms of both supporting our school with our education of what new things we might need, as well as looking at what is upcoming in our financial projections and our cash flow. Those are the pieces that will be a essential part of our June 4 budget and finance meeting, as well as our June board meeting. Mr. Peterson is running communications, because certainly we will have to communicate frequently and diligently once we do know exactly what we're doing. And Mr. Schumacher is running point on the logistics and operations, meaning, how are we actually going to run the educational side on it? We will be coming up with a minimum of three scenarios. The first scenario will be we are full in school, face-to-face, everybody's there, and everybody's in their classrooms. I would hope that we can get back to that as soon as we possibly can. We will certainly layer in all of our safety aspects with that when we are able to do that. Our second scenario would be that we are required to be fully remote, and where we cannot have any students coming into our building. I will tell you, for that piece, we have learned a lot from our second semester that we just closed. We will learn more from summer school, and our approach to remote learning in the fall will look different from either one of those scenarios. And that's some of the focus groups that Mr. Schumacher is running, getting some feedback from that end. The third scenario, which is the one that we will need some ISBE guidance on, is a hybrid version. Should the ISBE allow us to only bring in a limited number of students? How would we make that happen? And that is another aspect that Mr. Schumacher is working through. We are starting those discussions next week. We will continue with them through June. Currently, we expect the ISBE to give us our guidance about next school year in June. So what we will then do is we'll take our suggested possibilities that are realistic and doing the best we can for our students in educational setting, and then we will then vet those against the restrictions that the ISBE is giving us. We currently have not received anything from the ISBE in terms of the restrictions around it. So we will do our best with our brainstorming and our ideas, narrow it down. As then the ISBE comes in, we will start to vet that. I would hope that we would have some resolution to this, as long as the ISBE is giving us their information in a timely manner. My goal would be by the end of June, we have resolution that we have plenty of time to give our parents, our students, and our employees a heads up in terms of what will happen in the fall, knowing full well that how we may start may change, and how we plan, we may start, may also change.
Any other questions or comments from anyone?
Yeah, if I could, please. First of all, I want to express my admiration for the staff, the admin, for the planning and execution of what the district has done, clearly above and beyond in this crisis. I did have the opportunity to attend five of the parades. They were phenomenal. They were all flawless. One was great, and the other one was even greater, and it was just an amazing thing. I do, so I hope that for the people who are involved in a very unusual, maybe once-in-a-lifetime planning thing for these parades, I would hope that we would be able to provide some sort of special recognition for them. And the one, because of the unusualness of the parades in the Boomer Stadium, I think the Board should give some thought to some super-special recognition, bringing the police departments in from the various villages who helped orchestrate that, the fire departments, the village managers, and a letter of appreciation signed by the Board President would certainly be in order. But for the Boomers people themselves, they could have said no. They could have said no. So I think that we need to have something physically presented to the owners and to the people, especially the grounds crew guy. Steve was there, he knows what I'm talking about. These guys are amazing. We need to have a big plaque in the Boomer Stadium that says, "Thank you very much for helping out," or words to that effect. But that's something for later on discussion, what the district has done has been unbelievable.
All right.
I have, I'm sorry, I have a question. So I'm assuming in this planning that you're talking about, but there's also going to be planning for students that maybe don't have internet access at home, you know, in order to be able to still access remote learning in the scenario that they're not able to physically return to the building. I haven't seen a lot of information yet on how many students we have falling into that category, you know, so far. And I would, I'm assuming under your leadership, it's been excellent so far, of course, that, you know, we know that number and that we can incorporate that into our planning to hopefully bring that number down to a zero, you know, in the fall. If we're in a situation where our students can't return to the building, I don't, I don't want even a single kid stuck at home that doesn't have Wi-Fi, that doesn't have a ride anywhere, can't go physically pick up paperwork, you know, wanting to engage in school and simply not able to because of an access issue.
We have been working diligently on that, and I'm going to let Mr. Kovak talk about what we've been doing right now in terms of making sure we can get students access via some of the resources we have.
We have an ongoing relationship with Sprint through their 1 Million program to provide hotspots to families that tell us that they have no access in their home to high-speed internet. We actually exhausted our supply through Sprint and then established new partnerships with additional partners to acquire hotspots beyond what the 1 Million program provided us. And we know that Sprint is committed to refreshing our supply in the fall, once again. So if this is, that'll be the third year consecutively that we have worked with Sprint on that particular effort.
Thank you.
We will also continue over summer school. We do get a number of incoming freshmen via our summer school academies and invites, and we will run that same communication piece through our administrators that work summer school and our guidance counselor that works summer school, that if we're not making a connection to a student, we are finding out why we're not. And if the internet is one of the pieces, we immediately engage to solve that for the family.
That's wonderful. Thank you. I really appreciate it.
So I have some comments and questions. First of all, I absolutely reiterate and support everything that Mark said, that Mr. Kramer said, not only from recognizing the Boomer Stadium, like he had mentioned, but also from recognizing those administrators and staff members, and quite frankly, the teachers that helped put on these wonderful events, the wonderful parades. I went to four of them, including at the Higgins Center, at the Higgins Education Center, so, which was a little bit different, you know, certainly smaller scale, and in some ways, much more even personable than the more grand events that were held. But I also think recognizing some of those key people at each school and with the Boomers organization, and as Mr. Kramer had mentioned, the public officials, the law enforcement folks, and the fire department that had the big ladder with the flag hanging over the Boomer's parking lot, to ask them to come into a board meeting and recognize them publicly in that type of a setting, I think would be very appropriate, not only because it was so gracious, helpful, and needs to be recognized, but because we tend to do that for people like that who help us out, and I think they did an absolutely fantastic job. I also have some questions regarding e-learning and v-learning. Some of the feedback I heard, and not only electronically on social media, but verbally to me, was some concerns and questions around teaching methodology. And what I mean by that is some teachers would give assignments on a Monday and then either be difficult to be in contact with, or kind of went silent until either the end of the week, or if somebody wasn't doing the assignments that they were given on Monday. And some of the concerns around the methods that have been used by some of the teachers and/or some of the differences of teaching methodology. If a student has multiple teachers, some teachers may have been doing it that way. Some teachers may have had scheduled Zoom class time every day. We're going to meet during your regular class time from, you know, 10:00 to 10:40, or what have you, and having those commitments. So I'd like that to be looked at by both you, Dr. Small, and certainly Mr. Schumacher in your new role, to try to identify the best methods, because we know some students are better in a face-to-face setting, right, coming to class versus online. I think in some ways, you could still have that face-to-face setting, just on a screen, and some students are better when you tell them you will be in class from 10:00 to 10:30, or 10:00 to 11:00, versus, hey, I have office hours. If you need me, come on the meeting, I'll be logged in, or what have, right? So I'd like that to be looked at. I don't need feedback on that. The other things of concern are, and I don't know if this is already in the plans or even in the works, because I'm not a parent right now, but getting feedback from students and parents on how they think the end of the year went, and, you know, from an educational perspective, so that we can evaluate that and learn from that. And I know that's, I'm sure you guys will know that, it's kind of silly for me to say that. And finally, we all know the feedback we receive from parents, and that, I didn't sign up for this, I'm not doing this, I'm not a teacher, God bless the teachers, whatever their comments were, right? So a question I have, or a concern that I have, is to make sure that if we're either going to have blended learning or online learning, I would like to recommend some kind of training offered to parents, grandparents, whoever the supplemental educator is going to be in the home environment, so that, because, you know, just like us and our staff, they were thrown into it too, right? And they didn't get training. They don't have education on how to educate their students and their children, other than, you know, sending them off to school at this point. So, you know, some of them think their education is done, and now it's up to the schools to continue from there. So I'd like to see some kind of, especially if we're going to have them doing some of that support, right? I understand we're not asking them to teach a math class, but we're asking them to support that and support their students doing their homework, and support their students with the e-learning environment, making sure that they're motivated, making sure that they're there on time. You know, offering them, hey, if your student's having difficulty, here's my contact information. Here's the tech center's information, so that they can support us as well.
To piggyback on that, I fully believe that District 211 has best-in-class special ed, probably in the state. And I'm concerned about what the impact has been on those students. And if there was something, you know, I'd like to understand, not today, what's going on, and, you know, what we can and can't do, what's feasible, not feasible, because we really need to have focus on that.
We are creatively looking at that, as well as all of our opportunities with our students. We hope that our students who have special needs will be joining us in our summer school program. That will be very helpful for us to stay connected with them through the summer. We do provide those opportunities. And the one piece I didn't mention that I do want to kind of end with is, whatever systems we end up putting in those three scenarios, they will be fluid, because there's a very good chance we will start one way, shifting to another scenario, come back, and be moving between in-school, out-of-school, online, all-in, and our systems have to be able to be fluid through there. And that's one of the goals that Mr. Schumacher has, as we figure out what scenarios are realistic and feasible there.
I would also like to comment about the parades. I was at two of them, and I thought the staff did an outstanding job in presenting. Kids were crying, kids were laughing. They had a wonderful time and opportunity to see their teachers one more time, in actually a very casual setting, which was nice. But I also want to comment on the staff that provided, that worked on Thursday to provide the free lunch programs. And I don't know if everybody realized, but we were also providing food to the District 54 kids. And in some instances, those lines were pretty long. I tried to, I did stop off at the administration building, said hi to the staff there. They offered me food, of course, I refused. Went to Hoffman and was able to say hi to that staff. But at Palatine, I couldn't, I couldn't even come close to the school. I waited 20 minutes in line and finally decided it was time for me to get back to work. But I want to commend all those people that came in and worked diligently to supply these lunch programs to all our students.
All right, thank you. That'll bring us to our next item, in-district professional learning opportunities, a report. Does anybody have any questions or comments here? All right, the next item is our Freedom of Information Act requests. Any questions or comments? And that will bring us to the Notice of Intervention in Proceedings Before the State Property Tax Appeal Board. Any questions or comments on this report? And our last report is the Community Connections Newsletter. Any questions here? That will bring us to new business. First item of new business. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education waive the current outstanding fee balances for all outstanding fees and obligations incurred through April 30, 2020. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion here?
Is the waiver only through April 30, or does it, is the waiver for everything towards, to the end of the school year?
Lauren?
The waiver would be for any fee that had been, or obligation that had been incurred through April 30. We did not want to extend that through the end of the school year, because we were, we want to still encourage people to return their textbooks and iPads and those types of things that they would have in their possession. But it would be the vast, vast majority of our obligations that people would have.
Okay, so you have to do that to make sure we got our stuff back, okay?
All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye. Next, we have a suggested motion that- Next, we have a suggested motion that the Board of Education waive the District 211 driver education classroom instruction requirement per the Illinois State Board of Education guidance issued for the class of 2020. Can someone please move that?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I'd like to explain what this means. Our graduation requirements come from two different situations. They either come via the state of Illinois as a public high school or require to have these for graduation. And then the school board locally can add on additional graduation requirements. During this emergency situation, the governor and the ISBE relaxed some of the second semester senior graduation requirements to ensure that there was no harm done to our seniors being on track to graduate in a timely manner. There is a handful of students in terms of our seniors who are directly affected by a local requirement that we have for graduation. So we did not want to ignore that in terms of what was happening to a handful of our seniors also. And I'm going to let Mr. Kovak kind of explain a little bit more in detail what that is and why something that is typically taken sophomore year is affecting some a few of our seniors.
Specifically, the requirement relates to the classroom instruction of our driver education program. The District 211 Board policy includes that students will satisfy 30 hours of classroom instruction in driver education in order to qualify for graduation. Generally, students take care of that as sophomores or juniors. There are a small number of students at all of our schools that delay that for a variety of reasons. And so this year, as the senior class was reviewed, we found approximately 20 students per school that fell into the category of being impacted by this requirement. And when instruction was suspended in person and could not be delivered in a way that was supported by state requirements, we felt it necessary to apply this relaxed approach that the State Board of Education is applying to graduation requirements generally, so that we did not hinder the progress of these students. So this is a applicable just to the class of 2020. It is not carrying forward. And so a one-time acknowledgement for them.
So I have a question. Why could it not be offered to satisfy the state of the state requirements, considering my son started driver's ed after the stay-at-home order and just recently commit completed it, everything via online? Why were we not able to to proceed that route and have digital signatures for attendance and verification like that? Why? Why do we need to go this route and weren't able to find a way to set?
So we were, we are, any student that was enrolled with us, whether they were a sophomore, junior, or senior, taking driver education, we were able to complete the classroom portion online as the state allowed us to do. These are students who were planning, which they can do, to take it privately during their senior year. And pandemic hit, that portion of it, they suddenly were not not able to do that portion of it. So it could be the the company they were planning on going with didn't have that option. Whatever it is, our students traditionally do have the opportunity and the right to choose to take it privately. We still have a large number who stayed with us. But these are the students who were choosing to take it privately, but they were not able to complete it by whatever means their company was required to do. We were not, by the just additional piece of information, the ISBE did not allow us to continue with any behind-the-wheel instruction. And they still have not opened that for us yet.
Right. And this doesn't apply to the behind-the-wheel. This is simply the graduation for the classroom, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah. So just clarifying.
Dr. Small, not to open a can of worms with regards to driver's ed, but from a third-party vendor perspective and the fact that they're not doing any, they're not doing anything. Our obligation and our contract with them from a monetary perspective, how do we pay them? Are we still paying them? And if we're still paying them, how are we going to be hopefully positively impacted by the fact that they haven't been able to do behind-the-wheel instruction for the last two, two and a half months?
So we have been in constant communication with Top Driver. They are ready to drive as soon as the ISBE allows them to drive. We have communicated with the parents of our second semester students who were taking behind the wheel that when it was suspended by the ISBE, that we would be back in direct contact with them to set this up with Top Driver. If it opens in the summer, Top Driver will come in and start driving students in the summer, setting up appointments with two students in a car at a time that works for the students. Top Driver is also ready if this falls into August, as we don't have an indication from the state when this will open for us. They will drive in in August for our students and then continue to do our first semester students during the school day during their slotted time and also finish up the second semester students who need hours, and it would be at no additional cost to us.
So no additional cost. So the cost that we either have already paid them or are committed to pay for for those who have not been able to take it is not being impacted one way or the other?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Young.
Hi.
Mr. Kramer.
Hi.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Hi.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Hi.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Hi.
Ms. Cavill.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi. Next item of business is our Consolidated District Plan 2020. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the consolidated district plan as presented and authorize the superintendent to submit the plan as required on behalf of Township High School District 211. Can someone please move that?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This allows us to take our grants titles 1, 2, 3, 4, and IDEA. The state now requires us to bring the general concepts to you first. We then, upon your approval of this, go in and write the detailed plans behind the the each budget that we submit to the ISB for approval. And they still allow us to modify them along the way via amendments. Should we find unique need in any one of those title areas, we can resubmit. This allows us to take the first step of the submission of the general budget.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Hi.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Hi.
Ms. Cavill.
Hi.
Mr. Young.
Hi.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Hi.
Mr. Kramer.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi. That brings us to our spring curriculum committee report. We have a suggested motion that the curriculum committee report and recommendations be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion.
These were three, three of the first three remote meetings I had were to finish up our spring curriculum. And they were just as long as they do in person. So I knew that we could have good discussion via remote meeting time. I do want to draw your attention to the suspension of the state assessments. That is certainly something that we are used to doing and presenting our growth into you at our August board meeting when we do our academic goals presentation. We will continue that in August. Our data will just look a little bit different in terms of what we actually have available to show you. Waiting some of the details of how this one will unfold for us for next year. And with the the ability to our our juniors who did not have the opportunity to take the free SAT with us that we typically provide for them in the spring, that the state has told us they are working toward a solution for us, that they can take it their senior year free and still provide that opportunity. So we are waiting details on that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer.
Hi.
Ms. Cavill.
Hi.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Hi.
Mr. Young.
Hi.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Hi.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi. Next, we have summer curriculum projects. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the summer curriculum projects at a cost not to exceed the following per grant. Title 1, $99,600. Title 2, $91,900. IDEA, $28,900. Can someone please move that?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Our teachers worked diligently in the summer. And I know this summer, these discussions, as they cross five schools, including our academies, will have a different flavor to them as they talk about some of the lessons they learned and as they're creating curriculum, they are talking about instructional practices that are going to have to be done differently in the future.
Can you elaborate on the program for the Administration Center, the Edgenuity?
Yes. Edgenuity is an online program that we have been using for credit recovery. These are students who are not on track to graduate in four years. And because of that, we take a different part of their time in in their free day. We don't take them out of a class in their free time. And we try to work through an online system to expedite their ability to take the course a second time and earn credit in it. We have been using it since 2012. What Mr. Schumacher and Dr. Hauser are going to do this year is we are going to get it under the Guidance of District Account. And therefore, all of the different schools will apply through our district account, which gives us a little bit more continuity with our curriculum.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Hi.
Mrs. Klimkowitz. Ms. Cavill.
Hi.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Hi.
Mr. Young.
Hi.
Mr. Kramer.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi. Next, we have Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization budget. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education ratifies the NSSEO budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year and agrees to pay the district's proportionate share of the budgeted revenues. Can someone please move that?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I've asked Rene Erickson, our Director of Special Education, to join us today to give us a little bit of an overview of NSSEO. Obviously, Anna Klimkowitz, as our District 211 Board Representative on the NSCO Board, gives us frequent updates at our meeting. Renee and Barb Peterson are directly involved in the budgeting process through NSSEO, which is what we're presenting today. Renee?
All right. Well, the Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization, or NSSEO, really emerged as a means for public schools and neighboring communities to share resources for providing educational services to students with disabilities. At its inception, NSSEO served as the primary provider on behalf of its member districts to meet the needs of their students with disabilities. In District 211, as our communities grew and our population of students with special needs grew, so did the programming available within our schools. While we now currently serve the majority of our students with disabilities within our own schools and programs, we do have the highest enrollment of high school-age students within NSSEO. More specifically, we utilize the Kirk Secondary Campus as part of the district's continuum of services, with NSSEO providing for our students with profound and complex disabilities and medical needs and really serving as an extension of District 211.
Does anyone have any questions for Renee in regards to NSSEO or the budget? Thank you, Renee.
Thanks. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill.
Hi.
Mr. Young.
Hi.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Hi.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Hi.
Mr. Kramer.
Hi.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Hi.
Mr. LaFever.
Hi. That brings us to potential topics for future discussion. Any comments here?
All right, moving along to committee reports. First, we have Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization, Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank you all for taking a look at the NSSEO budget and for approving it. Dr. Hackett and her staff do a tremendous job trying to meet the needs of all the students. And it has been extremely difficult, not just for the staff, but also for the parents of our special needs students during this difficult time. At our meeting, we talked a little bit about the Teacher Appreciation Week because they were the shining stars and some different activities that they were able to do for them. There's also two new assistant principals over at Kirk School, Pam Gyo and Maggie Johansson. And there's also a new NSSEO technology coordinator, Eric Murray, that's joining the group. Dr. Hackett continues to be involved in legislation at the federal and at the state level, looking for what's in the best interest of students in regards to funding and in regards to activities that can be provided to the students through the e-learning and anything else that can be offered to them. They will have some graduation celebration coming up next week with some activities at minor school, some parades, something a little bit similar to to what we had done, but maybe, you know, definitely on a lower scale, and some things for Timber Ridge School and for Kirk School. So it was a brief meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Klimkowitz. Then we have our Education Research Development Legislative Report. And once again, this is Klimkowitz.
I don't have anything. I don't know if Lauren has anything maybe to add?
Sure. I can provide an update. Our last meeting was held on the 4th. However, there's been some information that has been coming out recently as well. During our last meeting, there was a guest speaker from the Illinois State Court of Education who really was there to talk about their role in planning for the upcoming school year and really just to hold a question-and-answer session. And I think a lot of what their Q and A session was, was to gather information to make sure that they were incorporating pieces of information or input from the the various districts into their final plans and recommendations. They did state that there is, and Dr. Small alluded to this earlier, that there will be a transition plan document that will be released with guidance for the return to school. And we anticipate that this would be released hopefully in the the coming weeks. They did address the fact that there will be particular laws that they may need to revisit. One example was seat time with the transition for students back to school and knowing that that might have a hybrid look or a, you know, a different look from what our traditional school year is. So they were working on those items. There was some discussion on the budget at the time of the meeting. There was not much information other than the fact that they were looking at the fact that if there were not appropriations for the evidence-based funding, that those would be taken from tiers three and four first, which District 211 falls into, and revert them back to the fiscal year '17 funding amount. Most recently, there was information that was released that says that the state budget conversation that they are working with now includes flat funding for schools, meaning that anything that was provided to them last year would be provided this year with no increase. So we were are waiting for some final determination on that. And the other piece of information that has that was reviewed was the Emergency Relief Grant, which falls under the Frontal Care Act. And that application was released earlier this week. Essentially, it's the relief grant provides funds to school districts to offset their COVID-related expenditures, including any additional expenses to support remote learning, PPE requirements, meal distribution, and other areas that school districts have incurred through the over the past few months. The allocations are based primarily on Title 1 funding and District 211 is has been allocated about $1.1 million, which is expected to to fall into next year's budget. Summary and overview of our last meeting and past few communications.
Thank you. That will bring us to partners for our community, Evening Community Services. Ms. Cavill?
I can share on behalf of Ms. Cavill, the the team met. I can share on behalf of Ms. Cavell, the team met this past Monday for the first time since the school closure began. The May meeting is typically our last meeting of the school year because the services at the Higgins Education Center do not run during the summer months. So it was a bit of a coming together to reacquaint ourselves. And each agency shared some of the strategies that they've been using to conduct outreach to community members during the time that things have been disrupted. I think one of the most noteworthy pieces of news coming out of that session was Harper College announcing and has been publicized since that the majority of their instruction this fall will be conducted via remote learning.
Thank you. That brings us to.
Mr. LaFever?
Yes.
I'd like, I'd like to say something about facilities.
Sure.
The only good thing about the pandemic is we've been able to start a lot of the construction projects already. There's been work done on the corner football field as well as projects over at Schaumburg, Frem, and Palatine. So I expect I'll have a better report coming at our next board meeting as to the progress of everything that's going on.
Thank you. That brings us to our announcements. And finally, since we don't have to return to closed session, next item of business is the acceptance of retirement requests. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of Paul Bello effective May 2024, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Scott Byrne effective December 2020, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Russell Cummings effective June 2024, consistent with the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Terry DiSorio effective May 2023, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. William Gillett-Gerton effective June 2022, according to the master contract of the District 211 Operations Maintenance Group. Karen Lasher effective June 2024, consistent with the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Carla Modelski effective June or December 2023, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Donna Ogorzlee effective May 2021, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Alan Paul effective May 2024, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Robert Walzer effective May 2025, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Mary Fran White effective May 2024, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. And Robert Widlowski effective May 2024, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Hi.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Hi.
Mr. Kramer?
Hi.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Hi.
Ms. Cavell?
Hi.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Mr. LaFever?
Hi. Next, we have a notice to remedy Azra Sayed. We have a suggested motion that the Board adopt a resolution and notice to remedy for Azra Sayed and that such notice be sent to the employee by the Secretary of the Board of Education by certified mail. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I have numerous concerns.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Nay.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Hi.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Ms. Cavell?
Hi.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Hi.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Mr. LaFever?
Hi. That motion carries. Next, we have acceptance of workers' compensation settlement. Suggested motion that the Board of Education authorize settlement in the pending workers' compensation matter as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Hi.
Ms. Cavell?
Hi.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Hi.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Hi.
Mr. Kramer?
Hi.
Mr. LaFever?
Hi. And if there's nothing further, I have something really quickly. Looking back at the upcoming meetings that we have scheduled, I'm noticing that the next couple of board meetings on the list are back to 7:30. Is that correct?
So the 7:30 start would be if we have no closed session items. If we do have closed session items, they'll be at 6:30, and then we would post that in terms of on our public site. When we post the meeting, that closed session would be at 6:30, the full meeting beginning at 7:30.
Very good. Thank you for clarifying.
The Budget and Finance Committee is going to be held up by Zoom in June.
That's correct. And the Budget and Finance Meeting starts at 7:30. There is no change to that.
Thank you. All right, we are adjourned. Have a good.